County Commissioners for Order. Please join us for the question.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Good to see you everybody today. We will begin our agenda with the minutes from our May 16 meeting.
Moving through the May 16 minutes.
And we'll motion Adele second with Tracy to approve the minutes of the May 16 meeting. All in favor, signify by say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes Jane. Okay, first up is Grant Administrator Jolisa Bates.
I have a copy here of the proposal for the layer grant. We ended up receiving one response to the advertisement for bid that we did. One short.
Oh, Jane, can I have that one for you?
Sure.
I'll get you one.
You do.
Okay. She has one already.
Oh.
I did have one before.
As you know, we had received a grant. We call it the layer. And it is for the sediment removal plan that we have to have created prior to being able to do an implementation plan. And this one that was awarded, the grant itself was for $7,500. And the project quote to create that plan that we received from Everclear was for 9375. If you look on that second page, it gives you a breakdown, 10% of that match can be considered in-kind services and then 10% would be out-of-pocket expenditures for the sediment plan to be created. So you're looking at less than $950 that would be coming out-of-pocket from the county to have the sediment removal plan for Manloaf Lake conducted. I'll get with Jane and forward her some of the emails that we received back from different ones that we had notified about this project where they denied the opportunity to bid on the project as well as the email things that we did receive from Everclear. So I would just like permission from the Commissioners or an acceptance, I should say, of this proposal to go ahead and to move forward.
Well, I think, how many proposals did you, or requests or proposals did you send out?
Thirteen.
Thirteen. Out of thirteen, we got one.
We had one that actually sent in a proposal and we had four companies that notified us as to why they wasn't, most of them was because they're on the other side of Indianapolis. So this gentleman has already been to the community, drove around the lake, did hit all of his prep work as far as that's concerned to make sure he knew where it was located and what the conditions were out there and this was even prior to submitting a proposal. So it really sounds like that they're on top of it and I know that he has worked with this particular grant program before, so he's going to know all the requirements and be familiar with all of that.
Sure. Okay, well, this will be the first step in what will probably be a years-long process, a project to get it totally completed, but we've got to start somewhere.
Right. Does anybody have any questions?
I'll move to accept the agreement with Everclear on this proposal.
Okay. I'll second that.
We have a motion Adele second with Tracy to accept and approve the proposal for Everclear Aquatic Management LLC of Kendallville, Indiana for a sediment removal plan to be conducted at Manloaf Park this year for had a cost of $9,375 total. Is there any further question? All in favor, signify by say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes Jane. Do you have anything else you want to bring to us today?
No, I'll be back at your next meeting.
Okay.
It's good news.
Thank you very much. Health Department, Matt Shirk.
The first thing on my agenda here is the grant agreement I sent Paul to all of you in email. I wanted to see if I could get approval to accept or renew it, about $65,000 immunization grant that we have been doing the last couple of years, or at least last year, that pays for our nurse, the health department hits up for renewal, so I want to see if I can get approval to sign that and continue with that position. Kelly Fagan is the one currently in that position, so it pays all her salary, pension and everything through that grant.
Now, we thought that that was going to expire, didn't we?
It's, this grant runs through June of 2024. After that, I'm not sure if this grant will continue or if it will be paid through the new Governor's Health Commission. So my thought at this time is this one will run through June and I plan on putting it in the budget, regular budget to keep her hired through the Governor's money. They haven't specifically said which grants will continue, which ones won't. The only ones we know that won't are the local health maintenance and tobacco settlement are no longer going to be available if we opt in on the Governor's Public Health. So at this time, the grant, this grant agreement just runs through June of 2024.
I'll move to approve that grant, submission of a grant for your funding for the, this is for the nurse immunization grant.
We have a motion with Tracy second Adele to approve the reauthorization of the immunization grant for the health department. All in favor, signify by say an aye.
Aye.
Three ayes.
And while I was here, I figured I wouldn't answer any questions anybody had on the Governor's funding. This is a paper I might have emailed to you too, but just a little bit of information on the Governor's Public Health Commission's funding for 2024, 2025. The way it's set up is each county can opt in or opt out. If you opt in, our minimum funding for next year will be 272,000, the maximum 362,000. If you opt out, we're only beginning the legacy amount, which is the $50,000 that's listed below and that is basically local health maintenance tobacco settlement. So it's 220-some thousand minimum extra dollars to go to the health department. The funding is required to be used on at least 60% as defined below and up to 40% can be spent on core services, so. Like the requirement would be for each county to opt in, Commissioner to accept or decline by September 1st currently, so there is a little bit of time yet. And then I would have to, they're working on a template where I would turn in a budget for that funding. I don't see any negatives to opting in at this time. The services that they're requiring are all services that we already provide or will be providing, so it's just a way to get extra money that we can use to, here at the health department, provide services to the community. Governor was looking at overall health status in the state of Indiana, basically what started this and then looking at spending and what states spend on health throughout the country and Indiana was way behind, so this is the push to increase spending on health in Indiana. So every county would be, will be able to have money available per capita and that's where your amounts come from.
Is this kind of like taking the place of asking or requesting for grant money? Is this kind of like to say, do this instead?
Right, they want the money to go directly to the county and not go through grants so that the people that are being hired currently through grants are county employees, so, but at the same time, they're going to fund it. I know that was one thing, like, so I do not know which grants are not going to be available anymore, other than local health maintenance tobacco. I did ask on the school liaison position this morning and they didn't have an answer as far as funding after September 2024, so. So we currently have, we currently hire, we have two full-time nurses that are working through grants and we have part-time nurses that work through local health maintenance grants and then we have part-time clerical that works through local health maintenance, so. So a good bit of our staff, the majority is paid for through grants, which a lot of those are transitioned to this funding.
People I've been hearing from recently on this, there seems to be quite a bit of confusion about whether it's a good thing or a bad thing. So far, I haven't read anything that's bad and it certainly does open up a new stream of revenue, the way it appears for the health department.
Right.
Would you be amenable to helping coordinate a joint informational session between the Commissioners and the County Council and everybody involved with the health department, including your board? So we can get everybody in the same room at the same time and go over this, hopefully by the end of this month, because Council is going to have to start budget work pretty soon and this is going to have a direct effect on.
Yeah, and it's still a lot of information for me to learn too, because what I've just do by the time through this month, so I need to figure, so it's kind of hard for me to do a budget, not knowing exactly what amount, but my thought is to do the budget with our old, our old budget plus the minimum that they're going to put in, so the minimum that, and then we could always add if they send more money, I suppose, would be the way to do it, so.
It's going to be two different funds, because this requires a new fund, so, so like if you did your regular budget like you always have and then do this new fund separately, but then at maximum amounts, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it doesn't give us a number, but it does say we have to set up a new standardized non-reverting fund, so I'll get with you on that.
Okay.
A creative number.
Yeah, I asked our district rep how to do a budget with a number that's so broad, but they won't know an exact number until they know exactly how many counties opt in.
Yeah. Well, it's kind of, well, like anything else, starting out, there's always uncertainty and kind of stops and starts in the beginning, but I think the more everybody knows about it, the better.
Yeah, like I said, it's going to provide more services to our community, that's a good thing. If we opt out, the money's going to go to other counties, the money's not going to go away, so it'll just go to other counties and we'll be in the longs. So that's why the minimum and the maximum is so different, depending on how many counties opt in. If counties opt out, then the other counties get more money, so, so you definitely don't want to say, hey, we don't want money, so just the way.
Yeah. Jane, what would work easiest for you, since you have to do all the preliminary budget planning, what would work easiest for you as far as our exchange of information to try to decide, hopefully this month, whether to opt in or out and then plan from there?
Well, if you just submit the budget, like that, for that fund using these numbers, then we can.
And then the council, yeah, only the Commissioners decide whether to opt in or not opt in.
Right.
So it's just up to Commissioners. But no, I can set up a meeting to try to explain it, but if you have a date in mind, I'll go ahead and send out an invite to everybody and include our transcripts or if you have a date in mind or if you want me to come up with a date.
I don't particularly, I don't have a date in mind, but I was hoping by the end of the month. Because if we, I'm going on the assumption that we will opt in, but.
Yeah, unless something came up that would be like, oh, wait, this is a bad idea, which I have not seen. And if there was anything to catch, there's not many catches or anything in there that I've seen, being involved with it from the beginning, from the initial meetings and what the goal of the program is, I think it's got a good goal for each county health department. So, so like I said, I think it is a bonus and a great plan for each county, so.
Has Jeff, have you seen the Governor's?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I've paid attention to it in Rush County, because I'm the Rush County Board of Health Attorney. I agree with Matt, but I don't think there's any very many negatives to it. The only, only thing negative is that sometimes people get frustrated with the state dictating how we spend it, but.
So it's just like similar to a huge grant of money that they're saying, we're going to tell you how you use it?
I think it'd be rather foolish to not do it.
And they, you know, the only question something the Council had was the money about the matching funds, because it is, you do have to match so much, so much, but basically all they're saying is you take the same money you spent the last three years, send that this year and they're matching, so.
We're not going to have to come up with more money, it's essentially our budget for the health departments that matches.
They stay the same, they don't want.
That was one question I had, did the match have to go into that new non-reverting fund, like, do we have to pull it out and set it aside? That would be a question that I would like to have answered.
I believe our match doesn't have to be spent this way, so I would assume our match does not have to go in that new account, that would be my guess.
It would stay in the regular.
That would be my guess, right.
Do you have a meeting with the Board anytime this month coming up?
We have a meeting once a while.
Oh, okay.
So, yeah.
Well, I would hope there would be more guidelines.
If I can give you more time, if you need it, because I give myself enough time to get it all.
No problem, it's just.
Right, well, on the new one, we've got some.
Basically what I'm looking at is taking the positions that were paid through local health maintenance and tobacco and then putting that into the new budget and also having it in there to pay the employees if they do come up with the other things, so we can continue with the work that they're doing. So, yeah, it's, but this state is saying they're going to supply a template, because we have to turn the budget into them, so there's, so I'm waiting on their template at the same time trying to do the budget service.
Yeah, well, if all the guidance was out, it would make it easier to plan right now, hopefully.
I do have, I mean, I do, this came out in March.
Yeah, I got that.
I don't, if you saw that, the implementation workbook, but it says what, you know, what next steps are. I also sent out another couple of papers, which has got the next steps, which are, they're just going to step by step. It's a learning curve for everybody, the state and all the, it's going to be all new regional concept for public health. There actually is going to be a district person in charge of our district health departments, there's going to be a district physician that's going to be working with all the local, local health officers, so there's going to be a district health officer, so they're adding some new positions to give us extra resources for what we do, so that will be nice to add those extra resources, extra physicians, not just.
And maybe it might be too, just looking at these steps, that second step to establish our county health plan, is that something that you've done with these funds in mind? Is that something you've already done?
No, that's something I'm still waiting on, this, that's the template that the state's supposed to supply, so we're still waiting on, I mean, like I said, we've got a general idea of how we operate now and how we want to continue to operate using this money.
So that might be the better place for a meeting to know, you know, with the health board in there.
The 60-40 guidance is on the front, you know, it says what, would you want to spend 60% of?
And how you plan to implement it, like, you have to have your head in, right?
And 60% is going to be the majority of, what they say 60% of needs to be funded is the majority of what we do, so they just don't want a bunch of money to be spent on capital expenditures and stuff like that, so they don't want to spend all this money on buildings and stuff like that, so that's why they do put limits on the board has to spend.
What do you all think? You want to try to plan for a, an informational sit-down like the third or fourth week of this month and hopefully Matt will have more information that'll help us and get everybody up to speed on this, because the Council is going to have to deal with it directly in their budget hearings and the more they know, the better.
Yeah, and then like I said, when we do have budget hearings, I'll be in to do well-known sessions with them too, so.
Yeah.
Hopefully that'll, that'll help. And then like I said, if it is two different budgets, that does actually simplify it, I think, because we have our regular budget, which has really changed and we're having a budget, which is going to be that money, so I can see that exactly where it's being spent and how it's being used.
Yeah, I'm still not clear in my mind if that's the way it winds up or not.
It's clear as mud.
Yeah, yeah. Okay.
Then I, like I said, like Jeff also testified, this is going to be a good factor for the county, so. The only problem I continue to run into is, is room, you know, we're trying to provide services and work, but not set up in the health department with an office space and a private space to do a lot of the stuff we need to do.
I was going to say, you definitely may, it seems like you now grow where you're at with all these other things that man.
I've got employees and closets and everything else, doubled up in offices, but we're managing and I think we're providing a really good service to the community and trying to be, you know, here for the community.
All right, and we'll, we'll talk real soon on.
Okay, if you have a date in mind, let me know, like I said, I'd be happy to, plus it's pretty easy just to email everybody and say we're having a meeting and all, or if you get, like I said, if you get a date and you want me to do it, or if you do it, either way, let me know and then I'll invite anybody additional who can come to answer questions.
All right.
All right. I think that's about it for me, so.
Thanks very much, Matt.
Thank you.
Let's see, Bill McDaniel didn't make it in, but he did stop by a while ago and he wants everybody to know that he is back out in the field doing field inspections now, he's just moving a little bit slower, but he is back out in the field and the services that we had contracted with Adrian Ellis to fill in for him earlier in the air are no longer needed and has expired. Emergency Management Director Wade Walling, Wade, do you have anything today?
I just, real quick, I was letting you all know or reminding you all be out of the office all next week, I'm in commel training in Greenville, I'm in Greenwood, so if you need me, I'll be available until the heat, you can always call me or text me.
Okay, thank you. Highway Department, Dave, do you have anything for us today?
Yeah. That's me. I didn't let you know they gave me a date when the fresh cutter will arrive, they're going to start, they're going to ship it on the 19th from Tampa, so it should be here probably 20th or 21st.
Okay, the 19th of this month.
Yeah.
Good.
We've been using the old one, trying to get some fresh cut, but we were putting cans in. We've got one more can to do, then we'll have all I know of in right now, and we'll start on everything else.
I'll be glad to see that machine get here.
Yeah. Did, you got the paperwork I sent you back out from Wayne County?
Yes. I read it. Did you guys read that, that policy that Wayne County has on the CDL costs for their highway employees?
I don't, I'll get it.
Okay. I read it. If we adopted something like that, the wording would have to be changed a little bit, but I'm quite sure before we, probably before we implemented something like that, we would have to include the union rep.
You'd have to make sure it wasn't a problem with that.
Yeah.
In doing it, yeah.
I, I don't think we're prepared to do anything today on that.
Well, we're either masking, because I'm down two people now, and I had two off today and left me four people short, and I had the mechanics out cutting the tree, because I couldn't find anybody else to go, because we was out putting two cans in, they took everybody we had. You want me to go ahead and bring a couple of class B CDL drivers on board and make sure they're okay with trying to get the license? I don't know what else to do, because we can't keep running shorthanded, because if we start paving or gypsying, we need every truck we can get on the road.
Can we, can we allow for communication and good faith that, you know, that's what we're working towards, that you could at least let people know, because that's kind of a hard thing, people don't want to take a job if they think they're going to have that expense right off, $5,000. I mean, we can't say it, because we don't have an ordinance, but I'm not prepared for that right now, but I know you're shorthanded too, that's not a good place to be.
I have no objection to that policy myself, because I read it.
I didn't, I did, I did see that, I didn't have an objection to it either.
But I can bring, I can talk to them and tell them they need to get it, go work on a policy to help them get it, only thing I don't.
I guess probably, we could, we could have something typed up in front of us a couple of weeks from now and that, and in the meantime, take time to include Lloyd Shaper in a, in a discussion with the guys down there and make sure everything's okay contract-wise.
Got to hit all any problems down the road.
Yeah. What do you think?
I'd sum up, let Lloyd sit and we can either approve it or deny it at the next meeting. I'd give Lloyd time to get with the union and take care of that.
Now, in the meantime, you have any potential applicants?
I've got, like I said, most of what we've been getting in class B drivers, I've just had to call some of them and talk to them.
Yeah.
I haven't interviewed any of them, because I wasn't really wanting to go that route if I didn't ask you, but if that's all we can find, it's all we can find.
Yeah. And the difference between Class A and Class B is one can pull a trailer and the other one can't.
One can haul equipment, the other one can't, yeah.
Well, we want to try to take it up in a couple of weeks.
I wouldn't be against letting go ahead and get the class B people, that would get him back to the manpower, and then if we do get an agreement, we can send those to school, if we don't, he's still got the manpower, they just won't be able to drive a pull trailer.
I'll call some and get some, interview them, see what we have.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have today.
Now, you want to tell everybody about the distributor truck?
As of right now, it's working. We haven't took it out and prayed anything else yet, we was going to come out to your road, but we've been trying to get all our cans in before the rain starts back again, but we will be out there to fix that bad spot, maybe the whole, hit the whole road if we can hit it, put a layer on top of it to hold it.
Well, the truck is working better now than it has in the last three years, isn't it?
Yeah. It actually puts too much. It actually puts too much oil down if you don't pay attention to it. But we could deal with the speed and stop that and happen.
What did they find wrong?
You're asking the wrong guy, let me tell you. There was a sensor in the back. It's got a sensor up front that reads off the eye, and this other one activates pop back there, and it needs to get more oil. It was showing working, but it was working going off and on. It wasn't working all time. They hadn't hooked it and it sprayed just fine. But they gotta get another sensor for it, but they're they can, they can regulate it by speed and get the right amount of oil down. It tells, still tells you how much oil you're putting down. You could, oh, you can get too much if you're not careful.
Too much electronics.
Too much electronics, yeah. The old ones used to have, didn't have no electronics on it. It had a wheel you dropped and run a gauge, and you paid attention to the gauge, and the guy in the back worked all the oil. Yeah, everything getting too fine tech, how's that? Even trucks, we got, we've got two pickups down, because we can't get parts for them right now, they're on back order. We just sent a truck up to Greensport because of the debt, and it cleans the system out. They can't get the parts rid, it's on back order. So we're gonna have to figure out something to do with them, because they're getting, they're old, they're two thousand twelve's. As long as everything's working, they work great. When that stuff there starts messing up, it just throws everything into chaos. So I don't know what we're gonna do with it.
Well, is there any new dump trucks coming available?
I haven't seen any, I mean, you can get up to Richmond and check up there at what's the name of that international dealer up there? Selkey or something like that?
I don't know.
They were supposed to be looking for some, I don't know if they've got any or not. Nobody else has come up with any, except for the one they had the distributor truck, and that's all that I've seen.
Okay, well, I don't have to remind you, we need a couple of new trucks from now. Okay.
Anything else?
Thanks, Jay. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything today?
I have nothing. I'm here in case you guys have questions with me.
Anybody got anything for the sheriff?
Not yet.
Are you still thinking about the deputizing project?
Deputizing, I don't think so.
Just to have people that you could have to deputize for help, like the security and things like that? Like I was thinking a big.
I just talked to Jolie S. actually earlier. I wanna make some of our jail jail officers jail deputies. And yeah, we're gonna work on that in the next couple of months, probably, get that going. I talked to her about getting them a grant for a vest and some equipment, so. And then hopefully one of these days, work with Wade on getting the the community response team.
Anything else? Okay, thanks, Sheriff. County Surveyor Bill Mackey, do you have anything today?
Yeah, I had a letter from the NOD, it's a report of contract final inspection and recommendation for acceptance on Bridge ninety. Everything's all finished inspected and we're done with everything. I just need your signature to help above mine, though, now I need to, I always want the ERCs, so. I've done everything grassroots, we're, go ahead. So it's hundred percent done, inspected, and to accept, for the county to accept the project, yeah.
So this.
That's Bridge ninety, you wanna work on it?
This is the end of Bridge ninety?
Yep, as far as any construction, any activity as far as up there, so.
I better ask before I sign that. Do you want to approve this? Would approve.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have motion to Dale second the treaty to approve the the final inspectable form for Bridge ninety. All in favor, signature by the say and I?
Aye.
Three ayes, all right, well, we'll get rid of Bridge ninety now for another eighty or ninety years?
Also, I want to apply for my, for a federal aid on the next bridge, because I've got Bridge thirty-two out on Fifty North. It's in process of being designed now. It'll be under construction twenty-sixth. So normally, first December, I have to have all my information, paperwork and everything in and out. And then in January is when we have all the, I have to go in front of the hours of being plead why we need the, why we need money. So I haven't picked the next bridge yet, but I just wanna let you know I was going to. That way, that'll be twenty, thirty, four years after for construction, if we go ahead and get approval for whichever bridge I pick. Because we've got probably ten critical ones right now. I'm gonna try to pick the biggest, most expensive, that way, you know, they pay eighty percent of it. So so I'm gonna do that. And I'll have to have a engineering firm, which I'm thinking about EFS, to go ahead, because SJC did the last one. And they're going to process, you know, they're gonna do, remember the plumbary, that little bit of a fee they charged, it's a lot of work to do in order to submit it. And I think EFS, I'll go ahead and have them do this one. And it's hardly nothing for the amount of work they do to try to get this back up there, because I, I mean, can't do this out, not without their help, because we did that one in twenty twenty, which, you know, is being done now. But anyway, I wanna pick a bridge and then, and we need to keep those every four years, that's not all we can afford, you know?
Right.
Yeah, so.
Do you do a, are you doing a traffic count, or how do you determine?
Generally, I think, I'm not sure. I think there was some company that did a lot of beer throughout the county. Did you pick a bunch of spots for your traffic counts? I don't know if it seemed necessary. The main thing is the condition of the bridges. I mean, regardless of what the traffic count is of, you know, we're not gonna be standing.
Where's our, do we have traffic count equipment still?
Um, we don't, do you?
I've got a calendar down here, I'm not sure if it still works.
I don't know if they require, if they do the engineering firm, we probably take care of all that if necessary. But yeah, I just wanna go ahead and get started on that. It'll take a while to everything be prepared by December, so we can move forward with the next. But also, I was at the city council meeting last night, found out on Bridge forty-four down on Williams Road with our workshop issue. Found out the permitting people at USI who's doing the design for the fix found out that since it's within two miles of the corporate limits of Connorsville, if I got them to waive any annexation, I'll send you the, I've got an actual letter to explain this all, okay? That we don't have, which it is, and they, last night they, I had to marry sign it. I will have to go to IDNR for the permitting, because that takes six months of review and is expensive. So we don't have to go through that, because there's no way I would get it fixed till next year. Now, small, we might be able to get that taken care of. And also without, there's still another minor permitting, which doesn't have the oversights in the Department of Natural Resources. But plus they require a lot of stuff above and beyond what the fix needs to be. So that'll save a lot of money and time. That city said that, you know, we're waiving annexation, which is over a mile from down down there. Like, it's gonna happen anyway, but, so we'll save a lot of time and money on Bridge forty-four, be able to get that done this year.
Now, that's a new one on me.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh.
I mean, that two mile.
Oh, yeah, 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 it was on the engineer too. So I don't know when this became a lot, in fact, but if it is, yeah, city can waive their annexation and we don't have to go through IDNR. So that's fabulous. I've got the landlord, I'll send you, that way you at least have it on your first staff, you don't need to sign or anything, because that was city's job. But, but yeah, so that's gonna work out really well, as far as financially and time. It's a work, certainly, but time mainly, because I don't think I wanna go through another spring flooding, you know?
Right, right, yeah.
And we've pretty much got the fix figured out. You know, plans are basically done, so be able to let some contract. All I'll have, all I have to do is send out email three contractors. And whether they respond or not, at least one responds, typical. And I'll try to find more, but that's the minimum. I think I have to do just three, as long as you. So I'll keep in for it, but when we're about to start moving forward, I'll have a doubtless good news when I found out about that about a week or so ago.
Yeah, I'd be glad to see that one get fixed.
Yeah, yeah, we can't get, if you did the idea, then that'd be disastrous.
Anybody got anything else for Bill? Thanks, Bill.
I got one for Jay, if you go back to Jay for a second.
Okay.
Do we need to do anything down around Bentley Road and those, since they've closed State Road one? Putting up some no large truck signs or what do we need to do?
We didn't put anything up.
Yeah, I know, do we need to?
They can get down there and see what's going on or anything else. I know there's trucks coming that way, because one of the two guys lives down on that road or comes down. He says they even with signs that says no trucks, they're still coming down. He said they haven't been able to stop them. He said they have trouble making the bridge down there where it turns on the other road, so I don't know. But I'll go down there and check and see what we need to do. We can, we can put up, put no trucks, signs up. And it won't stop them.
Maybe local traffic only, a speed limit sign like we did on Half Quarter Road?
He said they had barricades down on Franklin County side, they drove them out in the middle of the field.
Well, there's a barricade on Fairview Causeway, we turned and go that way the other day, it said local traffic only. It was still sitting there last Friday when I went through there.
They've been under set.
Last, last Friday.
They got a weekend, it's a beat set, yeah. He said they had a parade down there all over. One truck, blue car, I.
Well, it's gonna be a long one, so, if tonight lasts, I would probably should consider what we can do.
Yeah, that's gonna, it'll probably be just as long as the one out here on forty-four.
One where they wanted your pleasure view?
Yeah. There and, well, east and west both. And they had the one that closed on the east fork of the river over Union County. That tore up our roads out in the Springersville riverhood. And they destroyed Brownsville.
Well, there.
Yeah.
Are there any of those bridges out that route? The the weight bearing, the ones that we just have to work on?
I don't think, most of them, not really, they kind of down here on. On Franklin side, I think.
Yeah, not really anything.
Not on our side?
I know they're small, and they said they had trouble getting around, so.
Calling up.
Okay. Anybody got any mail? Need to share?
We have something we got from Fayette County Tourism Board, a letter.
Yeah.
So they gave us a report of everything they've got going on and things to come. And then they had a obfuscate from the letter, a special meeting of the Fayette County Tourism Board on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, held in Commissioner's Boardroom at Fayette County Courthouse at five fifteen, which meeting was duly advertised for the purpose of appointing members to the board following actual taken. In accordance with Indiana Code IC six dash nine dash eighteen and Fayette County Ordinance zero two dash twenty-one, Amy Brumfield and Kevin Strewing were appointed by the board to fill the vacancies resulting from the resignations of city appointees. Amanda Falk on April ten, twenty twenty-three, and Diana Phillips on April twelve, twenty twenty-three. The board was required to do so due to no city replacement appointments having been made within thirty days of the dates of the resignations. Copies of these signed resignations have been entered into the records of the Tourism Bureau as well as a record of the proceedings of the special meeting. Amy Brumfield will fill the vacated term of Amanda Falk, which ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. And Kevin Strewing will fill the vacated term of Diana Phillips, which ends December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And this was signed by all their members, Donna Schroder, Amanda Stevens, and Tamara Robinson de Grove.
Well, that was our official notification. Okay, anybody else got any mail? Okay, I've got, I've got one here. There's there's an engineering firm that is working for the town of Glenwood on water, on a plan to send water to Glenwood. And they, they're being required to do a study of State Road forty-four. I talked to you about this earlier, Bill, between Connerville and Glenwood to complete a study to verify whether or not there's anything of archaeological or historical significance on forty-four between Connerville and Glenwood. Now, their project is restricted to within the right of way of State Road forty-four. And to complete this study like this is gonna cost the town of Glenwood thirty thousand dollars. And they say they don't have the money. So this fellow from the engineering firm, his name is Thomas Barclay, has contacted me and asked if the commissioners could or would provide a letter to them stating that there is nothing of archaeological or historical significance along forty-four between Connerville and Glenwood. And to try to get them off, you know, so that they can get out of doing, spending thirty thousand dollars if they know they don't really need to. And I explained to him that I thought if we'd done that, the letter would probably sound even better if they had the county surveyor's signature on it also. But it it just, it just didn't make any sense for them to be required to do a study like that along a road. And and they're gonna be, they're in the right of way sharing the same space that all the other utilities are sharing. And you, aren't you their attorney out there?
Yes.
Okay, I thought so. Pardon me for being.
They would be greatly relieved if they don't have to spend thirty thousand dollars, which they probably can't spend.
Well, Jeff, you probably know more about this than I do. So instead of letting me sit here and make myself look foolish, why don't you tell us about?
I mean, I think that's, I think you pretty much summarized it pretty smoothly. I think there's a, there's a requirement that they have this study done, and he thinks that there's a chance he can avoid them having to fulfill that requirement.
Okay. Who is requiring this study?
I can't remember.
I think it's a grant, a USDM grant requires it.
Yeah, it's probably.
Different grants probably require different stuff.
Whatever entity is giving the money is, is, it's one of their checklist items.
Well, it doesn't make good sense to me.
Certainly does not.
I was talking to an engineer friend of mine, he's got a project down by Lawrenceburg. And just rebuild an existing intersection, and they had to, they did an archaeological study and found some stuff right next to the road. Right now, they're gonna have to dig up the whole road before they can even start. This is just basically where seventy, when you get off seventy-four and go in Larchburg Main Bank, just whatever east of there. They're doing a project, and they have to dig up the whole state highway, because they found stuff off the edge until they stopped finding artifacts. And that's gonna delay their project at least a year, probably. Instead, it was a state on the old road, yeah. That's what I was just told, because it was funny, because we just talked about it, and he was talking about that, finding that, like, yeah. So I don't know if even getting that, getting going down, but they're making the state tear up the highway until they stop finding artifacts.
Well, in a good, in a good faith effort here.
We tried.
Would, would anyone object to us, you know, drafting a letter and sending it to Mr. Barclay and explaining that to the best of our knowledge, there is nothing archaeological or historic significance along forty-four between. along forty-four between here and Glenwood. With that being a state highway right-of-way, should it come from us or from the state? I don't know. They're asking us.
If they're asking us, I said, we just comply. If they need something further, we look into that. But it's, it's the engineering firm that's making the application that's trying to achieve this grant is the ones that are making their request for us to draft the letter, so I think we should draft the letter.
If they find something, does that put us into the middle of something or?
We're just, we're not gonna state that there's nothing there. It's, it would be impossible for us to state that. We're gonna state to our knowledge, there is nothing.
Like there's nothing on record there.
What's that?
We would, we would be able to say we don't have anything on record.
Right.
Archaeological or historical there.
I can't see this working quite frankly, but he deals with it a lot more than I do, so.
Yeah. Well, I don't mind trying to help them out if we possibly can.
Yes.
But, you know, there's the archaeology has proven that there's, humans lived in this area from seventy-five hundred to nine thousand years ago. And there's hardly a square foot of dirt anywhere that they haven't stepped off. Who knows? And if they dropped an arrowhead here, that doesn't mean there's a hidden treasure there or something. It is, and you're like, you're gonna find something like that anywhere, so. You would think that the state would be required to live by its own rules in matters like this, but obviously they don't. Because they maintain a state highway there. And if they need to disturb the dirt, they do it. But if the town of Glenwood wants to run a water line out there, it's not okay.
So we, are we in agreement with, we'll do the letter, draft the letter?
Okay, well, we'll try to put something together then. Bill, would you be all right with signing something like that also? We'll give it a try and see if we can help them out.
Send her a desk.
If it saves you guys thirty thousand, fine. If it doesn't, we try. Okay, that takes care of that. I don't know if we really need to do this here or not. But we do have a couple of quotes on a repair job from wholesale carpet. Replacing carpet in the recorder's office from the water damage. Your choice is between broad limb carpet like was taken up or the stuff that comes in the smaller squares. You wanna make a choice?
I'll move to the smaller squares.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to approve a quote from wholesale carpets on carpet replacement in the recorder's office using the I don't know how to describe this, Jane. This is the carpet that goes down in small squares instead of one big sheet. What do you call that? Anybody know?
It's carpet tiles, carpet tile.
Carpet tiles, that sounds okay. For the price of three thousand nine hundred seventeen dollars and ninety-eight cents. All this has to go to our insurance adjuster. Okay. All the favor signals are saying aye.
Aye.
We can tell them that we did that officially. I'm glad I write notes. There's another one we didn't have a chance to talk about prior to the meeting. I'll start with the county attorney on this. We have a, an existing contractual agreement with a local painting contractor.
Correct.
To do some work across the street. As of today, by the terms of his contract, he is two hundred eighteen days past his due date and has accumulated penalty of fifty dollars per day for those two hundred eighteen days. And as of today, he owes the county ten thousand nine hundred dollars. Now, I don't think the guy is gonna ever do the job. But if we go decide to go another direction with that project, should we terminate his contract before we do that?
Yes. And once we terminate it, we're kind of out, we're running out of liquidated, liquidated damage days.
Yeah.
Which I'd be, to be honest with you, I don't know if we will ever see.
But if we terminate the contract, that doesn't make the liquidated.
Not up to that point go away, correct?
Oh, okay.
I would argue in court, I mean, a judge can do whatever they want, but I, my opinion is that no, that that would not, that would not get rid of our ability to go after improper damages.
Okay. Well, you know what we've been dealing with there? What do you suggest? You think we ought to terminate that contract and try to move on with a contractor or something? I'd really like to get that work done.
Yes, we'd like to get that finished this summer.
Yes. I want it painted three summers. We've been fooling with this for right three years.
Giving that guy a lot of grace. Giving him a lot of grace.
Yeah.
Do you have someone else in line?
Not right this minute, no. But I wouldn't want to get into an obligation with someone else on it with a still valid contractual agreement with this other guy. For obvious reasons. How much trouble could we get into by giving that job to someone else while another contractor still has a valid contract?
I don't think we have any, I don't think we have any financial concerns. I don't think we have any concerns. He's defaulted that contract.
Yeah.
So we can proceed. But sending him a notice of termination of the agreement is probably appropriately this way to go.
Okay.
We can hope that he pays that ten thousand dollars.
I would expect once you send that termination letter, him to mail a check.
Uh huh.
He'll send us back an I O U. Sorry.
I'll move to sending the termination.
I'll second that.
Okay. Well, a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to send a termination, letter of termination of the contractual agreement between Fayette County and Z W Painting. Is there any further questions? All the favor signals are saying aye. Aye, three ayes, Jane. And Will, Jeff, can you help us out with that?
Sure can.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think that I think that finishes our mail for today. Okay. In our old business, we have, still have the air handling units on our agenda, but there's nothing to report. We, they haven't provided any new information there yet. Does anybody else have anything on our old business? On our new business, we do have a library board appointment coming up. I've heard there's a couple of people thinking about it. They haven't come forward yet. We want that, we want that information to be known publicly, but we are, we do need to make a library board appointment by the end of this month. Or we should do it by the end of this month. Got anything else on our new business? Is there any patron concerns? Dan Parker, would you like to present?
Good afternoon, commissioners. Just a couple of quick, quick things. One, I'm assuming that you've received the invitation for the third year for the ready thing. I hope that your schedules will permit you to attend this this workshop. I will not be putting it on, so it'll all be really good. If you've got the invitation, I'm not gonna reread it. But just for the sake of those elected officials that may be watching the proceedings, we would like all the elected officials in the county, civic clubs, nonprofit organization leaders, school board, school system leadership. Anyone that may have a project that can be funded by, by the ready two-point-oh was the book we'll be looking at, that hour and a half from nine till ten-thirty on June thirteenth at the Ivy Tech note. The, the last thing I have, and I'll sit down, unless you have any questions for me, is that we did get confirmation back from our grant writer on the last installment of that extended phase three of the COVID money for Fayette County officials. So it looks like we're completely funded and we should be getting the money to Jane sometime, I think this month yet. And then we'll, as quickly as that money that comes to us, we'll cut checks and start distributing. Any questions for me, commissioners?
Any questions for Dan?
Thank you for your report.
Well, thanks for the invite to the.
Yeah, that was the reason quickly put that to get. I got the notification on Friday and then we put the, the invitation out yesterday as well, so we can respond and get it to. But if we get about fifty people invited and we'll see, we'll see when it comes around later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is there any other patron concerns? Anyone? Yes, sir.
I was. I got a request.
You have a request?
Yeah.
Okay, come on up and for the record, tell us who you are and tell us what you're requesting.
My name is Dale Jones. I live on Whitman Road. And I understand now they're gonna widen it and black top it. And I wasn't too concerned until I seen some painting done on the road yesterday, yesterday when I got home. And today I've looked at it and it seems like the county is approaching, encroaching over on my side of the road. On the, on the south end, I have a little, there's a lot on the west side. On the north end, there's an acre lot on the east side. Many years ago, the county went five to six feet, talking about on the south side of the property. They went five or six feet to the east, which took five or six feet of my property. On the north end, they went about the same distance to the west. And it looks to me like they're planning on doing that again. I'd like to have that hot, that road surveyed. Find the true right-of-way. And then you make the roll, whatever with you please. Everybody gives up Saint Malley. I don't think the county has a right to go out there. Sloniger was his name that was operating the equipment thirty years, thirty-five years ago. And I, I, while he's doing his work, I said, what are you planning on putting through here, super highway? He said, we're gonna go the same, because they went five or six feet on me. He said, we're gonna go the same width over there. But it didn't happen. That side never, side of the road never moved a bit. But like I said, I'd like to have that road surveyed. I don't, you know, the right-of-way has to be maintained through there. But the road should be in the center of the right-of-way. That's my, my request.
Okay. Well, lucky for you, we've got the highway superintendent and, and the county surveyor right here.
Now, that's good. Makes it easy.
Well, first of all, all, most of the right-of-ways we got are apparent. You're never gonna figure out what they truly are, so you're not gonna survey it as far as as far as what the true right-of-way is. What do you, what do you guys plan on doing?
Well, we were just marking so we know how far we can go because you're gonna go so far. You can't go out to the full width of the right-of-way. The full width of the corner to the base will be thirty-three feet. That's a lot on each side.
Sixteen and a half feet.
But if we could get it a couple of feet on each side and get it and smooth the road up, it'd be a plus for everybody. That's why the white line was supposed to be in certain roads. Couple spots they didn't put it in certain roads.
I hope to tell you.
I drove down there to look at it and I don't think they got distracted.
They got a mark out in my field three feet inside the fence.
They was going out showing where thirty-three would end up. Going sixty and a half feet east side.
Off the measurements.
Off the center of the road.
Yeah, but that, so that road's been changed.
Well, I don't remember when it's been changed because I've been down there since eight. And I don't remember Sloniger down there.
There was a, I think that road was Sloniger. He's operated the bulldozer.
Eric ran the bulldozer when I was down there, starting out. You had Mike Weber, Charlie Vangano, Bill Bossy. Those are all the auto equipment operators. When I come down there, that might have been right before my time. Because they changed a lot of people. They, they changed people very quickly back then.
Well, I think if you looked at your employees' records, I think you'll, I think his name was Sloniger. And he was the one that was sitting on that dolder when I talked to him. But like I said, they went to the east five, six feet to the west and done. And on the other end of the property, they get the opposite way. Center of that road needs to go back. And if they have to, to find the center of the road, when I bought that property on the west side of the road, it was forty-five point two four three acres. You can re-survey, survey that forty-five point two four three acres and find the center of the road at, back at that time when I bought it. So it can be done. We can find out.
Bill.
Surveyor can do it.
Couldn't we look at his survey, his land survey?
Probably look at the script.
That would be, he was that, we could probably, we could probably do, look, at least look at your land survey. He can do that. See where your points are for your property. That'd be a start.
Well, I don't care, but I'm, I'm tired of them. According to the marks that Jay's people put out there.
Yeah, they were, I told them just to measure the width of the road and get the center of it, give them an idea where everything would end up in thirty, thirty-three feet.
Are you planning on widening the road?
Not that far. Because you can't go that far. It's too far out.
There's ditches down the road.
There's partial ditches down to you there. Down the hill, there's ditches. The hill's wide enough. It's when we come around the edge, we're gonna come down to the area, that's where we're getting complaints at, so.
Well, the road, the road is bad, but it's the way that people drive on them. I mean, they drive like a. It's the way that people drive on them. I mean, they drive like a, they're like. They fly up and down that road sometimes.
Yeah, I've been down it several times. There's a, would you agree there's several sections of your road that two cars can't pass on?
I ain't never had no problem. But some people can't drive. I mean, I was talking to a neighbor, his car was parked there. I could have put a semi down through there. Then people just sat there and blowed their horn, like, you know, telling us to get out of the way. Well, they, you know, people, some people can't drive, let's face it.
Well, you don't mind if we improve your road, do you?
I'd rather you not.
You would rather not?
Absolutely.
Well, your neighbors.
And most of the people that live on that road, other than that curve that first comes off of Everton Road, that first sharp curve, which is, is bad, the road ain't that bad, in my opinion. Of course, I don't want to drive near it sixty miles an hour.
Well, your, your neighbors also have a stake in this.
Absolutely.
So we have to consider everyone that lives on the road.
I, I, I understand that. But I own the most, the most footage on Whitman Road.
Okay. Well, we won't charge you any extra for that.
Uh, you probably won't. You'll probably charge me a whole lot more.
No, no, no.
Yeah, you will. Soon as you, soon as you make that road nicer, you're going to jack my taxes back up more.
Now, actually, none of your property taxes goes to road.
Well, I don't doubt that, too.
Again, with gasoline taxes is what pays for the road repairs.
Yeah, and I know some of the roads you got that you're collecting gasoline tax off of, there ain't no road there. Ain't been a road there for fifty years.
Well, you'll have to point those out to us. But anyhow, I'm sure that, you know, there may be some fences need to be moved back and this, but that, that road is in dire need of some improvements.
Well, personally, I'd rather it not be. But like you, you asked me, I told you.
Yeah, okay. Well, we appreciate hearing from you.
All righty. Gentlemen, ladies, you have a good day.
Hey, thank you very much.
Appreciate you again.
Is there anything else from anyone? That concludes our agenda. The only thing left is claims and payrolls.
We have to approve claims.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You, uh, Jane? That concludes business for today. Did we forget anything?
Most likely.
I'm glad to hear that.
Wade?
Yes?
Did you get the panic alarm buttons?
Yes, they've already been distributed. So they're hooked into the system. Everybody has them. They had them before. Yeah, here in front, desk, ladies and gentlemen.
Anything? Jane, did we forget anything? You're not saying that with a straight face. We usually forget something, we'll catch it up the next time. Okay?
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Dale, seconded by Tracy, to adjourn all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Three ayes. We're adjourned. Thank you all very much.